Meeting? Were you at that? Did you, were you in on that meeting? Nick? He can't hear me.
Yes, I was there.
Yeah, I heard your voice.
Well, okay, I saw you. I guess you know about the grant having been granted?
Yes, January sent us all the news.
Yes.
That's a great, great thing, great topic.
Yeah, I'm happy for it.
Yeah.
Now we have to get moving on all the, everything that follows.
As long as everybody stays healthy, that's the main thing.
Amen.
Right? Everybody showing up tonight?
Okay, I'm unmuted. Temporarily, anyway.
Shouldn't we all stay unmuted? Nick?
Yes, I guess we should.
Yeah. But you're, I can't hear you talking.
I'm not sure how to unmute myself permanently, but Bob can do that.
You can, just put on mute. On mute.
Hey, everybody.
Hello. It's nice to see a young face.
How is everybody doing?
We're here.
Doing well, Tiana.
We're here.
Good, good.
How are you doing?
I'm good, it's cold today, so just staying warm.
Yes, that's for sure. Tomorrow will be warmer.
Oh, good.
I was trying to look ahead 10 days, looking for how it was going to be next Thursday. I think it said the weather 55 and raining, but it doesn't, it just shows, you know, this little signs for rain, doesn't say how much, you know?
Oh, yeah. Well, 55 isn't too bad.
That's doable. Anyway. What are your plans for Thanksgiving?
I'll be home with family, you know, really small, nothing, you know, not traveling or anything like that. No, no outside state family or anything like that either, just staying small and comfortable. What about you?
Yeah, I'm gonna be by myself, I, my daughter wants to come and pick me up and take her to her house and I'm staying put by myself.
Oh.
I mean, it's, it's just safer that way.
Yeah, definitely, definitely.
Likewise, we'll be two of us here and maybe Skype with our kids.
With the kids, right.
At some point during the day, anyway.
Well, that's the safest, so.
My grandson flew today from Boston to LA. And he's quarantining for two weeks, you know, at his mother's house. And then he's gonna stay because he works from, he works from home anyway, so he's not gonna go back to Boston right away.
Hmm, well, that's smart.
So cold there.
NBC, how've you been? Are you doing any more running?
He hasn't gotten himself set up yet.
Well, he has good video.
Tell him to unmute.
You're looking good, NBC, you still running?
Yeah.
Ah, there you are.
Freezing.
Now, we have seven more minutes and we need one, one more person.
Is January here?
He will be.
November, not yet January.
There's January.
Hi.
Hello.
It's early.
Oh, we have six minutes left or so, seven minutes.
This is the pregame show.
It's not much of a show.
It's warming up.
It's warming up?
Yeah.
I was at the Board of Education former building today.
Yeah.
To pick up some, an application for the subdivision. Everybody has moved out of there except John Toth, he was the only person left.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
The whole building to himself?
Well, yeah, they were moving furniture out today.
Where are they moving to?
The Consalata site.
Oh, the Consalata Fathers, sorry.
Yeah, on Route 27.
Yeah.
27, yeah.
On their side, it's Somerset, on, on the other side of the street is North Brunswick.
Correct. Correct.
One, two, three.
We're good.
Four. We have a clock.
Yes, Nick, yes, Nick, we're good, yes. Five minutes.
That's a long five minutes.
Yeah.
It is. January?
Yes.
I listened to that, that band on, what was it, Sunday?
Yeah.
They were really terrific, I had no idea what that kind of band was, because that's not my kind of music. But it was really fun to, to listen to them, yes.
Good.
And then afterwards, he asked, does anybody want to ask any questions, you know, or say anything? And the last song he played was the only one I knew, was Irene, "Good Night, Good Night Irene." My middle name is Irene, so I said, "Thank you for playing."
What kind of a band was that?
A string band. It was really bluegrass, kinda. But they lived way out in Long Island, and he said they were just as glad not to have bucked all the traffic, they would have had to come, to come to the library to play.
Tiana?
Yes.
Is that your college, Delaware State?
Yes, I went to, for undergrad, I went to Delaware State University.
That's, that's not the Blue Hens, then?
No, it's the Blue and Red.
Yeah, okay.
The Blue Hens were, were like, a little down the road.
Newark.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
The mayor coming tonight?
As far as we know.
January?
Where's Kevin?
Did anybody? Did anybody say they weren't coming? Oh, there's Agnes.
Agnes. Good evening. Nobody's coming.
Agnes?
Yes.
I can see in your room that you've done what I'm trying to talk my wife into our, are doing. It's putting a maroon accent wall in our main room.
Yeah, this is my dining room, yeah, part of my dining room.
Yeah, yeah.
This is very nice, makes the place very colorful.
It's the same, same maroon I put up as a little test board.
Yeah.
And what did she say?
Come on, Bob, come on, Bob.
Go into this.
You won't do it?
Well. Not at the moment.
Usually the wife that wants to do these things and then the husband that doesn't want to.
Right.
We don't have, I don't feel we have enough color in our.
Oh, do you have a lot of white?
It's, it's an off-white. It's a little lighter than what Agnes, it's a little lighter beige than what I see.
On my, oh, okay. Idea. That's pretty nice. I have.
Okay, we're getting down to, we have about one more minute.
Yeah.
Boy, a minute takes a long time.
Doesn't it?
This is a meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Franklin Township Public Library. It's Wednesday, November 18th. And this meeting is being held virtually by Zoom. And I want to thank Bob Wardlaw for being the host of this series of Zoom meetings. I'd like to call the meeting to order with a pledge of allegiance, and we really have a flag back here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic under God. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Law. The schedule and notification of this meeting have been provided to the Courier-News, the Home News Tribune, and the Franklin Township Clerk. Copies have been posted in the library's vestibule and are also available at the reference pass. I'd like to call the roll now. Agnes Coolabanya? Iris Kizman?
Here.
Tiana Gresham?
Here.
Nicholas Champa, that's me, I'm here. Ed Ward?
Here.
Kevin McNeil? I don't see Kevin. NBC?
Here.
And Mayor Kramer? I don't see him at the moment. Okay, we do have a quorum. January Adams, our director, is also with us. And Bob, do you see any members of the public here?
There are no members of the public at this time.
Therefore, I will skip over the Part 1 of the public comment. And we'll move on to the discussion and approval of the minutes of the prior meeting, which was Wednesday, October 28th. We've all gotten them in our packet. Oh, Mayor Kramer has joined us. Hello. Okay. Is there any discussion of the minutes? Or, let's put it in the proper order. Is there a motion to accept these minutes? NBC? And Agnes has seconded. And now we should discuss it, is there any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none. Motion made and seconded and discussed. Those in favor of approving the minutes from the October 28th meeting, raise your hand.
Aye.
Seems to me to be unanimous. And so, let's see. Moving on to the director's report. January, would you like to discuss your, the reports that you've given us?
Well, why don't we look at the financial first and see if anybody has any questions or comments?
Okay. I looked, I looked them over and I just saw one little thing with, one thing with a sewer and water bill and found out that a little problem there has been well-handled by staff, by the director and the staff, including the the branch staff. So, I'm happy with the financial report. Are there any other comments on the financial reports?
No.
Okay. January, would you like to move on to your operations report?
Sure. Well, the big news, as you know, is that the library's grant application for $1.3 million for construction of the Southern Branch was approved and was successful.
While the process of that is.
Yes.
It was approved, it was passed by the legislature.
It was, it was a dreadful grant, it was just dreadful to do, but it's done. Oh, and I'd like to also point out that if there were 129 applicants and 38 got grants, that means that we were one of the 0.29% that got a grant.
Wonderful.
Excuse me, did the legislature pass it?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I missed that.
Yeah, um, I have that here. I don't know where I put, but they did, I think it was today. Yeah.
I was at the league today.
So now I just have to wait for the award letter. And in the meantime, the staff has been busy, they keep thinking of resourceful ways to operate virtually. It's amazing, the things that I guess you can do when, you know, necessity is the mother of invention, that we've got the children's department, they started doing some programs outside. Of course, it's kind of cold to be doing that, but that, the people seem to like that. And there were 23 virtual programs. And like I mentioned, the children's department has been doing programs outside. One of the first ones was that Story Trail, was, was like a progressive dinner-type thing, where they moved from spot to spot, all socially distanced and arranged like that. And people seemed to like that, that was a hit. And let's see what else I highlighted. And the, and the branch has been doing, she started doing those Zoom virtual story times, and those have been going over well. And she's also added graphs. And speaking of grants, the young adult librarian did two grant applications that if they're successful, that'll be, we can use them to get some books for the Northern Branch. And that was it. And you, did you see the picture at the back of the?
Yes. Halloween.
Yes, I see it.
Yes.
Are there any questions for January about the operations report?
No.
Seeing none, I guess we can move on. Next item on the agenda is President's Report. I have very little to report, except that today I did pick up a revised application for a subdivision that the Board of Education had filled out. And I, after 15 minutes, managed to get it into the, into the township.
You got in?
And it, no, I didn't get in, but, but it's been delivered to the proper authorities, Vince Dominic and Scott Thomas. So, the the next thing will be, I guess, for the planning board to schedule something for the minor subdivision of the land of the two-acre block.
I also think we should, I guess, when they do that, make sure they do a 200-foot notification. But I also think we should notify beyond that area, and we should have a hearing.
We, we have just, yeah, you had discussed that earlier. Now, it's pretty difficult at this time to have a real hearing. And I believe that the subdivision will probably come under the category of a minor subdivision, in which case, if the minor subdivision committee of the planning board sees fit, they can waive the public hearing, but I agree, we should go out, maybe to a couple of dozen at least neighbors beyond the 200-foot norm and tell them what we're doing. Now, the thing is, upon getting the subdivision application, we will not have any architects' drawings to present at a meeting. But it's a good idea to at least say, tell the people, "Library has purchased property from the Board of Education, here's where the property is," show them a little bit of a map, and the plan is to build a library on it. And more information will be available when we get it.
Well, we probably shouldn't have meetings until we have at least the site plan and some general plan of what the library is going to look at.
That's exactly what I think, and that will come after the subdivision.
Okay. And I actually think we should notify between Clermont and Bennington Parkway and maybe Evelyn Ave and Vermont, which will be, I don't know.
I'm having trouble with the mayor's audio. Is anybody else having trouble with hearing there?
I am.
Let's see, hello, is this? Let's see what I have set up, sorry.
No problem with this video, you're looking good, mayor.
Is this better?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, I'm using my secondary mic. So, I just, I was looking at a map. I would just like to do a large area between Clermont, and I can redefine this, Bennington Parkway, Evelyn Ave and Vermont Ave. It'd probably be 100 homes.
Yeah, it's not that many, it's not, not a large number, I think that's very reasonable. And this can probably be just by a normal letter rather than certified mail or anything.
The 200, I think the 200-foot people might have to be certified, but for the others, we don't have to.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's, I think that's, that's my understanding as well.
Just to, you know, you want to be fair, you want to reach out, you don't want people to suddenly say, "Well, I never heard about this." I had someone complain, you know, they're doing the canal dredging now, they're almost done with it. They started it four years ago. When it finally came up to somebody's house, they said, "How come I never knew about this?" Well, we had hearings five years ago.
This is over in East Millstone, correct?
Yeah.
Right across from the little post office?
Yep.
Yeah.
So, okay, good. That's terrific.
And mayor, you're, the people over on your side of the parking lot have been very helpful and I'm sure you're encouraging them to continue to be so, we thank you for that.
Yeah, when we thought we didn't get it, I send them a thank you letter for all their work and then about five days later, I got contacted by the, someone from the governor's office saying, "Hey, the gov stepped in here and said he thought you should get it, and he made the recommendation." So.
Good. Okay. Correspondence and communications. We have.
A note.
A note?
Thank you note.
Yes, you see that? Very nice. Is there any other correspondence or either incoming or outgoing? No, okay. So, let's see. Old business. Southern Branch, I think we've.
Yeah, we did that.
We discussed that. So, scheduling, Saturday afternoon.
Okay, so I think I'm going to retract my proposal from last time. As you requested, I did a little bit more research and the the attendance has remained about the same. And we did have some trouble trying to figure out, we're at a way to ask people what they thought. So, I came up with a question of, "Do you prefer to come to the library in Saturday morning or Saturday afternoon?" And we put that on Facebook, we only got, I think, nine people answered. But of those nine people, six liked the afternoon and three liked the morning. So, I guess since there was some hesitancy on the board's part, and I'm kind of ambivalent about it, it is okay with me to leave things as they are.
Okay, so there's no, no action required here?
Yeah.
Okay. That wouldn't be a sufficient sample size.
Not a good sample size.
But, but it's certainly something.
Lately, those are worthless anyway, so.
Okay. Is there any other old business? Does anyone have anything left over from past meetings? Okay, how about some new business?
Well, you've got your schedule for next year.
Yeah. Has everybody looked over the schedule?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is there a motion to adopt the schedule for the year 2021?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Edward.
Okay.
Second.
Iris seconded it. Any discussion on any of the, any of the items in the schedule? Seeing none, let's vote, to vote on the motion. The motion is to adopt this published list of 12, of 11 or so needed dates. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I find this passed unanimously. Does anyone see any reason to go into executive session today? I certainly don't. January, you don't, right? Okay, we're gonna skip, we're not gonna have executives, an executive session. And Bob, has any member of the public entered the meeting?
No, there's, nobody, no changes since when we started.
Okay, since there are no members of the public attending the meeting, we were gonna, we will skip Part 2 of the public comment. And note that our next meeting date will be Wednesday, December 16th. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No, can I just ask a question?
Yes.
Um, what's the status of the? Um, what's the status of the North Branch of the?
I've been going over every week or week or two. I do have some pictures that I'll send around. Progress is considerable. They have most of the walls covered and, uh, I think they might make it by September of next year.
You know, at the, at the, at the last JFK meeting, there, uh, somebody on the Environmental Committee mentioned that, um, we could use a, a grass, a grass, uh, roof. Now, would it be possible to use it in that building?
No, no, the, uh, the roofs are already in place and, uh, the space that we're gonna use, the library space, has a very unusual sloped roof. No.
I mean, but I mean for the whole building, not just for our space.
This is not something you do as an add-on.
Okay.
And I, I, Councilman Chase did discuss this somewhat, and I'm going to get more information on that. But it's, it's quite an undertaking. And even if we wanted to do it on a, on a subsequent building that isn't designed yet, it, uh, well, I'll find out more about that, but it's not simple. It's, there's a, and the, my feeling is that besides the structural things that are required to support it, what's unknown to me is the ongoing maintenance over the years, and I think that's an important thing. When we're trying to, if we try to build a building that'll be useful fifty years from now. But I will find out more about it and.
I mean, that, that's the same situation if you use solar panels, too. You don't know what the maintenance of that is. Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I so moved.
Iris? And, uh, either NBC or Ed seconded it. It looked to me like a tie.
Give it to NBC. I defer to NBC.
I don't mind.
Okay.
Between sportsmen.
Okay, um, all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
It looks to me as to be unanimous. We are adjourned.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Be well and stay safe, everyone.
Yeah, bye, Ed.
Bye-bye.
Bye now.
Thank you, Bob.
You're very welcome.
I'm gonna leave the meeting.
Okay.
I'm leaving, too.
I'm leaving.